Welcome, everybody, to the Tuesday, April twenty fifth meeting of Board of County Commissioners. Please stand for the flag of allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the people for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the accounts payable deficit. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Baxman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is one of our more enjoyable items, and that's recognizing our Employee of the Month.
Our Employee of the Month is Ashley Hellman, R M. Ashley is an immunization public health nurse for the Saint Joseph County Department of Health. And Ashley was nominated by the Director of Nursing, Jody Parrot. Jody said in her nomination that Ashley has gone above and beyond in being one of the smiling faces that patients see her see in our South Bend and Mishawaka clinics. She has taken on training, new staff, for orientation with our E M A R, E M A R system and clinics. She has token it, or she has taken it upon herself to help anyone and everyone that she sees needs assistance. Because of the above, this has contributed to improving the flow of county business and success of the unit. Thank you, Ashley, for being such an amazing employee and Employee of the Month. Thank you so much.
Anybody else like to say something?
I would just like to say thank you so much for everything you've done, you know. But we've got a great team, and I just feel like you have gone above and beyond. And I think you brought training and excellence that you've shown.
Yeah, I would just, you know, I can't remember, she stepped in at a difficult time as we're preparing to launch the E M R. We've been short-staffed in nursing, so she's added some stability and presence both here and Mishawaka. It's been a great asset to the department.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
How long have you worked in the public health department?
This time, a little over six months.
So she's been with the public health department previously, so.
About two years.
Anybody else?
I would just say she's an example of all the excellent employees we have in the public health department.
Well, step over there, you get your lovely parting gifts.
Wearing nice pants.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Who's your favorite commissioner?
Obviously you. That's my favorite name. Dieter's my favorite name.
Shush, shush.
Thank you.
Welcome.
That's where you belong.
That's yours, Mr. St.
Great job, Commissioner. Nope, it's all right. But she gets the rest of the day off, Doc?
Nah, I'll take some.
Thank you for coming back. And Mr. Fleming, why don't you serve bagels? Moving on to the Health Department, approval of the Nacho Grant, twenty twenty-three.
Amy Rupi, Administrator with the Department of Health, offices on the eighth and ninth floor of the County City Building. And we are requesting support to sign the contract with Nacho for our PACES Program. That is the Positive and Adverse Childhood Experiences Program. The funding is just short of fifty-five thousand dollars. And if there are any questions, we have our PACES coordinator available to answer those.
Questions or do you have anything to add to that?
Uh, nope, that's exactly what we're here for.
Okay. Got you. No, no further comments. Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve the Nacho Grant.
Second. Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, approval of the Force Five contract.
For you, it's an approval contract for Force Five, which would be funded through our C V C C H W grant. And it would support the work that our C H Ws do in the community for advertising, media outlet advertising.
I would just note that, you know, this is something that was brought to us a while ago. And commissioners, especially Derek and I, thought, you know, health officers should have the opportunity to look at that. And that's one reason why we didn't take any action last week. Happy to move forward now. Yeah, how will this go out? What media outlets are you gonna pitch to, or how?
Uh, Robin Nita, Director of Hope, Office of Ethan O'Quinn. Um, we'll use a series of digital platforms, streaming services, social media, Twitter, YouTube, those types of things. Um, since most people are connected through their phone, there are metrics that we'll be monitoring to ensure that we are seeing the return on what we hope to achieve. And that's more social needs assessments. And we have the opportunity to pivot. If those streaming services and/or digital platforms aren't receiving the uptake, we're hoping, then we'll assess them with Force Five as they are a leader here in our community when it comes to digital marketing. And go from there to make sure that we're successful.
Is that, so the information was in original packet that we all got, all that type of stuff? So what is your projected outreach? How many people do you think is pissed back?
Oh, goodness. Um, so there's two pieces. One's countywide overall general awareness. So there are a certain number of impressions that they anticipate. So everyone in the county will see at least X number of messaging. Um, so I think it's at two or three times throughout the six-month campaign. So it's everybody in the county. And then we do have a more targeted approach specifically where C H Ws are within their census tracts, that those impressions and connections are a little bit more concentrated. But we.
Are you targeting census tracts?
Census tracts, a piece of it will target the census tracts where our C H Ws currently are assigned to. But everyone in the county has the opportunity to engage with the C H W and receive services from a C H W. And everyone throughout the county will also see our messaging. So not just that maybe they don't need it, but maybe they know somebody who needs it. Um, that's why when going with Force Five, they were the only one um, that had the approach to this general county awareness campaign in addition to the more targeted campaign with the census tracts. They had the opportunity.
And you'll be measuring your feedback on.
Monthly basis. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's more than okay. I think that's important.
And then, um, are you, are we gonna put this on our county website also?
Yes, we love that. Yeah. They'll be all through our Department of Health social media. So, um, and I know that I believe that county on the team, um, well, that'd be great. So should he follows and shares our stuff, so we'll make sure it's there. Yeah.
But you want to put Cart Magnets on the Commissioner's files?
Yeah, if you want.
But our E M A directors, or no, director and assistant, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, good job. Thank you. No further questions at this time. If there are no other questions or comments, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve for the Force Five contract.
Second, Doc. Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Baxman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Just a point of interest, since I started here in twenty-one, and I'll have that out later. Over sixty-seven times that the Health Department has come to here, everything that has been approved. We didn't approve the two-point-seven for the Christ Center, but we gave six-hundred thousand. Um, and the only thing I found that we didn't was an agricultural appointment from twenty-twenty-one.
I need to apply.
Yeah, so the, uh, the word that there's a war against the Health Department and all this stuff is not even remotely true because everything that has been asked for has been given in addition to moving really workers to a building across the street where we coverage that. Um, in addition to the seven spots I went out with Dr. Heinert's looking at other buildings, satellite office on Portage, Genoa, Point Street, and Lafayette, Jefferson. So the highly touted war against the Health Department does not exist. Moving on to infrastructure planning and growth. No, you guys can stay if you want. You have work to do. Yeah.
All right, guys. Take care. Thank you.
Sky Matters, Department of Environmental Planning and Growth, offices on the seventh and eleventh floor. This building, the first item I have is an approval request to approve a approachment. This is on Bay Road. This is a situation where through the subdivision process, they're, they're giving, dealing right-of-way to the county. And there's some asphalt track and a fence that's within that new right-of-way, not causing any disruptions. Um, so we're presenting this encroachment agreement for you to, to, you know, approve. And more or less, it says that there are issues in the future and we need to remove those items, we can. But since they're feeding us the right-of-way, we don't need to remove those items now. And we reviewed it and asked for your approval.
What scenario, the vision that they would ever, that we would ever have to? Is there other things in that runway that?
The only, say, for instance, for some reason, that portion, that area, we ever would need to widen the road and we need clear zone or something like that. Um, I don't see that in the very near future needing to do that. Um, but what this does is this gives us the ability to know that route whenever needed.
Is that close to the property we went out on? The guy was complaining about the kind of curve there speeding and all that.
No, that is not, yeah.
Any other comments or questions?
That's in Mishawaka, right? Yeah.
So it's more than, it's in the county.
Right, but it's.
It's, it's, yeah.
I've been there.
Close to the old airfield out there, Mr. Curtis, remember that? Thank you. We're Dr. Dieter, sold in nineteen sixty-five. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve this consent agenda.
Second. It's actually a motion to approve the encroachment of the public credit. Do we have a second? Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Baxman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is approval of a request to declare the intent to perform emergency repairs on a failed culvert.
Uh, we got a call last week over on Opal Road, which is on the southwest side of South Bend. Culvert had failed after road had a sinkhole developed, saw filled with ditch. And what this is before you is a request to declare this an emergency so that weekends work with contractors get prepared as soon as possible. I've already took the liberty to tell contractor to order the material, so I request your approval.
And that's an Opal Road, right, you said?
Yes.
Yeah.
Nothing was damaged of the road?
No, and there's a sanitary sewer line that's, that's right next, right above the pipe, actually. But it's in a concrete saddle, and there's only one home attached, and it's still in good condition. We had South Bend out to video everything, but that's, that's one of the reasons that we wanted to get it done as soon as possible. But nothing was damaged and we never opened it.
Any other questions, comments regarding this? Negative. Do we have a motion?
Oh, well, yeah, I have a motion to approve the emergency repairs on Opal Road.
Second. Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Baxman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of bid request for mainline maintenance asphalt overlay.
A little over a week ago, we were notified that we had received a million-dollar crossing matching grant uh, from the state, and that's a fifty-fifty match, so we'll be matching that with a million dollars. And that, that million dollars will be used for this, uh, mainline maintenance asphalt overlay project that we would like to, um, advertise. And it is, uh, for about twelve miles, the mainline road, um, which ends up being somewhere between uh, three-point, I think we have made around three-point-eight to four million dollars total. We still plan to come out with some subdivision package this year and also a payment preservation package. Um, we're able to do those this year because of the Community Crosses Grant, but also the four million, five million dollars that the count of the A R P money that was appropriated to us. So we have some other things coming out, but what this is, is to commission to advertise uh, for bids for the mainline ass, maintenance asphalt overlay project. Answer any questions and request your approval.
And as we said last week, while Commissioner Dieter was doing a well-reserved vacation, um, congratulations on good work on getting the grant. Certainly moving forward, I know it doesn't cover all of our needs, but.
It helps.
Step in the right direction. Any other questions or comments regarding the mainline maintenance asphalt overlay?
Negative.
Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve the bid request for the mainland maintenance asphalt overlay.
Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Baxman, how do you vote? Motion carries. Next, approval of the quota award of the month.
Uh, this is another situation where we had a culvert fail, uh, on Ranker Road. This year, this spring, we've had, uh, more, um, culvert failures than, than I can remember since I was here. Um, I think it's in, you know, we've had some rain, but it's also getting to the point where a lot of these culverts are corrugated metal. It's past their use of life, and they're starting, starting to fail. And most of these structures are under the structures that we do in inventory. Usually, we do an inventory of three foot and above. So a lot of these are twelve-inch culverts, twenty-four-inch, thirty-six, you know, those types of things. So, so we don't know about them until they fail. So this Ranker Road was one, and we went out for quotes. Uh, we asked seven contractors for quotes. We got two. And, uh, we requested Grove Excavating be awarded this project for twenty-five thousand dollars. Have any ask any questions?
Any questions? If not, do we have a motion?
Oh, a motion to approve the quote Grove Excavating.
Second. Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Baxman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Finally, Kingston contract. I can. Oh, me.
Robert, Robert Krasinski, County Surveyor, Office on the seventh floor of the County City Building. Uh, this is about agreement between Brian Kingston and the Board of Commissioners to perform scanning work on a part-time basis for the remaining of a year that the commissioners are aware of over the last year and a half. You know, we've wrote a couple of these contracts. And not only do the two people that are working now, they also perform work for the I P G Department for Bill Shalhoub and John Carlson. Uh, in this case, we've done some rearranging in the Spares Office with, uh, scanning material that needs to be scanned and put on the portal for the G I S system. Um, John and I and staff worked a day and a half and on the third floor and in a closet last week to get everything straightened out and get scanned. And, uh, I know Sky Meter's and his staff has worked down there occasionally to rearrange the office. But, uh, I'm glad to answer any questions on this person. Uh, the funding for this will come from the Spares Section Quarter Fund, which is anybody there to cover it.
Was there any onsite locations you're gonna have to go out to?
All reasons are there, or no, it's just all in fair work, still inside work. All right. I have John Carlson here to answer any questions regarding stuff.
Thank you for all your fine, good work, John, on that.
Problem anytime.
Sorry, I forgot that that was yours. You mentioned that. Thank you for the consideration and span. Any other questions regarding the Kingston contract? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the Kingston contract.
Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks for the match, too, buddy.
Hey, no problem. Thank you.
Moving on to the I T department. The contract is Dell for Microsoft Volume Licensing.
Yes, this contract was already, um, approved by a former department head without one of the proper channels of having it approved by the Board of Commissioners. So we're in the second year of this contract, and we need to have it officially, officially signed off by the Board of Commissioners to continue it. The money is already budgeted, uh, so we have it in our fund already to pay for it. So, you know, additional money that's appropriated for it.
Well, since I'm on my email, keep working. Can you imagine what it means?
I'll probably walk out the door.
Any questions for Warfield regarding this contract?
All a question. Mr. Warfield, I had learned that there were some, some other departments that were duplicatively licensed into Microsoft software. They had their own contracts. Have you found any of that? Is this the master licensing for the entire county?
Yes.
Okay.
And when you say.
They might have had.
Publikants who.
I, I thought, I don't know, what do I thought it was P S A, it was paying separately for a Microsoft license. But I may be incorrect. There was another department within the county that was paying for it.
P S A may be paying for their, um, they have their own life because they're kind of county, but not part of county. So they do have some stuff with county, but they're, you know, they kind of handle their own stuff over there, so.
There's where there's a savings to be achieved. We can find other department heads that might have, might not be aware that they're licensed or they're counting. Do you think everybody's aware of that?
Yeah, no one else, we, we, we've done an audit and.
Okay.
There's nobody else that, uh, is licensed or paying.
Separately, okay. So, thank you. We need a motion to ratify the execution of the contract.
We need to add that motion.
So move.
Second. Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Baxman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to old business. Yeah, we're not aware of any disappointments, but we just want to note that we'll be accepting proposals on until Tuesday, May sixteenth, uh, six P M regarding Portage Manor. Again, we ask proposals be in digital form so that the distribution is easier. The final vote by the council is scheduled Tuesday, then thirteenth at six P M. So the deadline is Tuesday, May sixteenth, for any other proposals coming in. With that, we'll move to Councilman Katanzer, I mean, update.
Mark Danzer, my council, twenty twenty-two, Oak Park Drive, Southern Indiana. Commissioner, just an update. We met as a task force on Sunday to get a review of what's happened in the past week. And, um, the operation is going to be bad. If you go to that meeting, not everybody was there, right?
Yes. John and I were there.
Yeah, okay. So the players that needed to be there could be there, and there's also conflict that's coming Friday for that same group. So they're gonna meet on Friday, Friday, May the fifth, at their next meeting at four P M at Real Services. Uh, the advocacy group is still working on their petitions. Um, people are still petitioning the state legislature even as we speak. We're hoping to get an answer back this week before the session concludes on whether the state legislature will find any other sources of funding for Portage Manor, um, for this year and going forward. We, as a group on the task force, intend to get a document into the commissioners' hands. We hope to by Tuesday, May the fifth, um, kind of a decision document that gives you more than one option. So you have more, more than one option to look at. We'd like to get that, you guys, in your hands by the fifth of May. That way, you guys can look at it and discern that before. Actually, I'm sorry, May the ninth. Yeah, it's May the ninth, because I want to get it, yeah, it's not the fifth. Um, we want to get in your hands by May the ninth as our, as our goal. So you have a week to look at it before the sixteenth, before you have to make a decision on any digital proposals that are coming forward to you guys. That's all I have at this time. We intend to meet this coming Sunday again at the Forest County Rescue's Office in Union, uh, Williams Street. And all welcome to come. The meetings are being recorded, they are in.
Thank you for the report, continuing efforts.
Organize.
Thank you very much.
At the meeting, uh, last Tuesday, uh, President Baxman tabled the approval of the new projected H R financial person that was tabled. But our attorney has said, which is true, ten days, over ten days, so that is now in work. So that has gone into effect. So we will be publishing that out for people who want to apply for that, probably tomorrow or Thursday. We'll have that information out. So if you'd like to apply to be our H R Financial Director, and you meet all qualifications, we may interview you. Anything else? If not, we'll move to public comments. I did, oh, I'm sorry. Mike was your first.
Thanks, Sam. Appreciate it. One, one small comment.
Just for record.
My name is five-one-nine-four-zero, that I brought. Uh, I appreciate, as do I think most of the citizens in the county, everything that has been done by the Board of Commissioners, uh, in our public health. Very, very important to everyone. I take a little bit of issue with your, uh, statement that everything has been supported.
I will send it to your email.
Because a lot of, uh, things that you get to, especially in the last four months with the new, uh, county council, uh, you voted on matters which have already been read on, in which important issues relating to public health have been stricken from those bills by the county council. So new past things that have already been watered down. And that is, um, the main source of the growing. Uh, you might not like to hear it, but the growing, growing concern and fear of, uh, many, many citizens that are for the health and all the good work it does really is being, um, attacked. And a couple of examples, uh, a small program, a very important one relating to tracking, um, diseases by ticks, uh, airborne or tick-borne diseases was stricken from the bill originally by the council. It was finally restored. Um, but that was only because people rose up and said, come on, people can die from getting hit by ticks. Why would you strike that out? The second thing is, uh, a program for just about, I think it was about twelve thousand dollars that was to provide information to pregnant women who were going to deliver their babies to term, uh, particularly in, um, less advantaged neighborhoods. That was stricken because somebody on the county council, uh, and I've not seen any proof of this, but somebody on the county council claimed that the organization providing this information to pregnant women was somehow at the same time telling pregnant women fight white supremacy. I looked all over that board's sites, that, that entity's sites. I couldn't find any of that. And, and it was just, just unbelievable to me that something like that would be taken out uh, of the Health Department's hands. So I don't want to escalate anything here, and again, we generally are, um, um, in awe of our Health Department, and you have been supportive on many, many, many things. But there are some people on the council, and we can't ignore it. There are some people on the council who have made very public statements. But there are some people on the council and we can't ignore it. There are some people on the council who have made very public statements who have gone down and testified in front of the state legislature.
My turn three minutes ago.
Against, it was fifteen seconds. Uh, against S B four and uh the Pennsylvania Governor's Health Bill and said, we don't want it. We don't need it. We don't want the proactive things that our Health Department does. That's just not right. Most of us want those things. And most of them have been self-sustaining and paid for themselves. So um again, I know you've tried and many, many things have been done successfully, but things are changing and, and people are aware of that.
These are commissioners. You need to talk to the council.
Uh, believe it. I've stood before and had.
Thanks, buddy.
Dan Caruso, three zero five Compton Street, New Coral Island. Um, Tuesday morning, ten A M. We're crammed in this room up here. I know we're trying to get more people, the public constituents who are involved in the government. And I, I remember a lot of times it was just Deborah and I at these meetings. And there's a lot, this room was, was overflowing. We, we were standing out in the hallway. Um, I don't, I, I stopped by the fourth floor and there's nobody down there. I do not understand the hesitant, we're, we're meeting what y'all wanted to accomplish. But let's, let's get more people to turn out. We, we've got people on screen on, on Zoom who are in this building that would be in this room, but they know the room is crowded. So they're just gonna zoom in from their office within this building. Um, so I, I think if, if we're gonna make a plea for people to get involved in their government, we've got to make the space available for them to attend in person in Zoom, by Zoom if they can't. But like I said, I think a lot of these people who are on the Zoom right now would be in this room if they didn't already know this room was packed. Uh, I, I would ask that we move meetings, all, all the meetings to the fourth floor. There's nothing going on there right now. There's plenty of room. And this, this is government. This, we want to see, I, I, I appreciate everything you all have done. And so Mike said, with the Health Department, the efforts you're making to, to move things along there. Uh, one more thing, uh the, the the commissioners had, had pushed the, the Human Resources Executive Director of Finance. And everybody at, at the council, at the council's committee meeting uh seemed to balk at the hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar range salary that this person was, and everybody was talking it down. And I had a talk with the Council of Shots after the meeting and I I kind of agree with him. It's time, we complain about all these people we train that we hire in, we put in our positions and we lowball them on the pay scale. And then we get upset when they get stolen away by another entity. Say, well, we gotta train another one. It's time to start paying Saint Joe County. If you want good people to come in here and stay in here, pay them. Hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars sounds reasonable to me when you compare with what other people are paying. Uh, just, just as uh the, the new health officer, um, uh, uh, two hundred thousand dollar range. When you look at all the, what everybody else is paying does not seem out of line. It's time for Saint Joe County, however you gotta do it, to start paying your workers. Thank you.
Commissioners agree. That's a council issue.
I'll be there too.
Al Kers is Saint Joe County E M A Director. Just wanted to let you know, last week we had a huge drill over in our office uh tested the functions of command and the drill was planned and executed by Deputy Director Lopez over there. We had a district two, three representative from I D H S Homeland Security who was very impressed and so it was a drill. He said it made, met the standards of an exercise. Want to thank all the county people that came. We had a lot of different uh departments represented there, uh that even uh from the city of South Bend, the building department, a lot of fire departments to test that our functions of command if we were going to have a real disaster here, going through the steps what we do. And a few little hiccups here and there that we identified, we'll work on that. As we go forward, we're gonna keep pushing more training, getting more county, city uh employees involved in this training and including other agencies like not-for-profits uh and things like that. So just want to let you know that we did that last week.
Also, I want to thank Abby Wiles' team of code enforcement. They did evacuation for us. They did a phenomenal job and also G I S, John Carlson and his staff with the mapping that they did. Everybody was impressed on uh evacuation zones, the mapping. It was uh very impressive. I thank Abby and John for uh letting their staff participate in it. Well, thank you.
We're in the process of cleaning out the garage out there of trailers, equipment, all that stuff. So, yes, we are.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Deborah.
Um, good morning. Thank you for your work today. I'm Deborah Droual, two one six seven seven Autun Road, South Bend. Um, this is the last week of both Earth Month and Poetry Month. So I thought I was almost obligated to agree to the last offering on this kind of thing. Um, but it's very appropriate right now. Um, this book was written by Robert Hemmer, who was at the time with Notre Dame, but he is now with the Capitol, obviously. And he wrote this book in nineteen ninety-nine, Seeing with New Eyes. An ecological spirituality is a spirituality that gives us a new perspective. It enables us to look at a place, any place with new eyes. With such a perspective, we see place no longer as simply that setting for our activity, but as a complex interaction between the various spheres of creation. We enter into this dance, learning at times to lead and at times to follow. We see in each place the difference of creation, the intelligence of each organism and the fundamental energy of the universe at work. We see God, who is endlessly new and marvelously intelligent. We experience the sustaining and creative divine energy of love. Thomas Berry believes that our patterns of consumerism places in a state of psychic entrants. Our dreams are out of harmony with the dream of the earth. What is your dream of the good life? Where would it unfold? What impact would it have on that place? How does the life you live now harmonize with the ecology of the place where you live? The writings of Teilhard de Chardin, the French scientist and priest, says the day will come when, after harnessing the ether, the winds, the tides, gravitation, we shall harness for God the energies of love. And on that day, for the second time in the history of the world, a human being will have discovered fire. Throughout my life, by means of my whole life, the world has little by little caught fire in my sight until a flame all around me. It has become almost luminous, luminous from within. Such has been my experience in contact with the earth, the diaphany of the divine at the heart of the universe on fire.
Thank you. Is anybody else in the room wish to?
Sorry, one more thing. I want to thank uh the Surveyor's Office, John Law, participated in the draw also. I knew John was good, but I never realized the wealth of knowledge that man has. If we ever have a spill with the combination of resources that he has available to our community, uh my hands uh belong to him.
So that was John Law and the surveyor did what?
He let us utilize him.
Okay. Just for clarification, just for clarification.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mark Danzeray, sorry. I just wanted to comment on the E M A exercise last week. Um, I did attend and left with a good one, but I was very impressed with our E M A department. I sent you all an email on it, but one thing I did notice, and I, I know that we've got a plan in the works, um space limitations in the E M A office are very limited. So if there were a full scale of that, so we had to enact or set up an E O C. I know that uh there are plans in the works to, that I, that he said, okay, I believe. Greatly, greatly needed um staff that are agile with what they had. Um, there were some, like, buddies, some glitches they had, they identified. But all in all, it was ready to exercise. And I think the community is better served by having um our, our E M A staff doing the good work that they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nobody else in the room? Let's move to the, those people on Zoom call. Cynthia, your hand is up.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for passing the Force Five Contract and the Nacho Contract. These efforts will help our county. Thank you. I want to speak this morning regarding the Senate Bill for Governor's Public Health Commission Bill. This bill has enjoyed very good bipartisan support. It is currently in conference committee as expected. On April twentieth, the Senate and House selected their countries and advisors who are now hard at work reconciling details. It is expected to pass the conference committee process and to head to Governor Holcomb's desk. Funding for this bill has already been allocated in the budget bill. Once this bill becomes law, you, our Board of Commissioners, will have the opportunity to opt in to get more sustainable funding for our county health department or to opt out and leave our county health department funding as is, but still with the requirement to perform core services without that additional state funding. Those of us in the county paying state taxes deserve to have our share of these state tax dollars returned to our county. Thanks to an amendment from our own Senator Rogers, there is no loss of local Department of Health autonomy regarding how to provide the required core services. Please choose to opt in to the Governor's Public Health Commission Bill once it becomes law. It just makes so much sense to opt in. Thank you.
Anyone else online wish to? I'm sorry, I couldn't see them. Sorry, Roy.
No problem. Uh, Mr. President there. Uh, Roy signs four twenty-six South Meat Street. Uh, good morning, Commissioners, Council and other guests here. Uh, obviously, I'm back here again to talk a little bit more about Portage Manor and some of my concerns there. Uh, when we started this process uh three years ago, it seems like uh as uh Mr. Dieter's pointed out, um, there was a shortage of capital funding availability and a shortage of revenue sourcing for Portage Manor. Um, as an experiment in my M B A class, I had my students uh do a six weeks project. And uh they found, obviously, the three point eight million dollars. It's currently earmarked in retention bonuses and to make a new purchaser whole, which is roughly sixty-six percent of what it would have taken to upgrade all the capital findings. Uh, shortages to bring Portage Manor whole at the current hundred and forty-four beds. In addition to that, uh today at uh council meeting, Mr. Shalio was asking for approximately two hundred thousand dollars to come out of the Healthwind Fund. Well, Healthwind was a former county facility uh primarily for tuberculosis, which also Portage Manor was used for. So I'm curious as well as where that hundred thousand dollars a year that Healthwind is bringing in and why that wasn't allocated to Portage Manor. So it seems like while there may not be a war against the Health Department, there's definitely some atrocities that have happened against Portage Manor as far as diverting funds to have maintained the facility and also towards the current operations. So including that Healthwind Fund, there's also the one point seven million dollars in mental health fund. And so while I do appreciate the fact that Dr. Atala and some others have shown interest in um coming through in, in a pinch here, we still haven't gotten a real answer as to why there was such a sense of urgency to shut down Portage Manor um and what the real motives are behind it. The community has come out and the, you know, the, the um the, the power and will of the people have spoken up in favor of Portage Manor. The county has all the tools and resources, including the state statute, to be able to fund Portage Manor and make this operation viable within the community. Um, there are some concerns that, you know, that we will lose the overall mission of Portage Manor if it goes to a private or third-party entity. Um, so I just, you know, wish that the commissioners would reevaluate their decision. Appoint an appropriate board that fulfills the top five qualifications for being a board member at Portage Manor, not just the last one. And the last one is basically a good community member, which while a lot of good community members are important and vital to the voice, but just as we're talking about a good finance director, we need a good directorship at and leadership there as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Stuart, you're next.
Steven Whitmer, fifty-six hundred block of Eastview Drive, Osceola, Indiana. Thank you, Commissioners, for letting me speak. Regarding the Saint Joe County Health Department having their actions or funding watered down, leftist political and Marxist ideology and terminology has been applied to their operations. This is not acceptable and will not be tolerated by Saint Joe County residents. We do not need to grow our health department in Saint Joe County. This would have us being stuck with another bloated bureaucracy. Thank you.
Anyone else online wish to offer a comment? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'd like to acknowledge a uh former Southland Tribute icon who covered the city government for a long time, even when Woody Kersch was on the Jeff Parrott is here today. All right. And Deborah, you should be happy to know that my softball team is being sponsored by Unity Darkness. I'm gonna use a wooden bat.
So they're gonna do your uh conferences.
You come to all the games.
Okay.
It's like. You still put it out with that wooden bat? Sure.
Well, there's no other public comment. Do we have a motion to recess?
Don't move.
Second. Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Dieter, how do you vote? Mr. Beck's very ready.
Thank you.